Commissioners Rita Dozel?
Here.
Joanne Eaton, fellow Sarden, here. Bob Momartz?
Here.
Rachelle Ripmester?
Tom Ricker?
Here.
Jim Sattell? Attorney Liz Cross?
Here.
Lerner Redbox?
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. And on our agenda we have the Calmonte, so if anyone wants to speak on anything other than a Calmonte agenda item or non-agenda items, you can come forward now. Okay, you see none, let's move on to the consent agenda, the approval of the March 4th, 2014 minutes. Do we have any comments, questions on those minutes? Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Dozel has a motion to approve the minutes, second by Commissioner McCool. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nannas and Commissioner Ricker abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. Next on our agenda is item number five, public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending to the Board of Trustees the approval of the Calmonte II planned development amendment, case ZON-PD-ZDP-A-2014-2, and preliminary plat, case number SUB-PP-2014-2. Public hearing is now open. We have proof of publication for the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Proof of publication is verified. Would like to have a staff presentation to start.
Good evening. Just a brief presentation from staff's perspective, just doing a little bit of an overview, background, as well as a timeline, and a little bit of our analysis for you prior to the applicant getting up and doing a presentation. As you saw in your staff report, this is the Calmonte site. It is adjacent to Colton Road and McCaslin Boulevard. In 2001, the Town of Superior Board of Trustees approved a planned development plan for what was then known as the Smith property, now Calmonte. At the time, the planned development approved up to 75 townhomes that are currently under construction again by the applicant Boulder Creek Builders, and up to 272,000 square feet of commercial use, specifically office and retail. And it's an approximately 35-acre site. At the time the PD was approved, additional residential development was anticipated west of McCaslin. Those lands have since been purchased for open space, and the viability of that site as a commercial opportunity has since decreased. And therefore, that commercial area has remained vacant since 2001. Little bit of a timeline of more recent events. November 25th of last year, the applicant presented a concept plan to the town board and received enough comment that they felt comfortable submitting an application. The application was submitted on February 19th of 2014, and it's substantially similar to what they submitted for a concept plan. Now, we're here tonight for the public hearing for the planning commission, and should they feel comfortable continuing, this is anticipated for a town board hearing for approval on April 28th, the end of this month. Little overview on the site plan. What they are proposing is 39 single-family homes. And something different about this neighborhood that would be seen more commonly, they're proposing single-loaded streets, which means the residents only are aligned on one side, and it's essentially the backyard of the adjacent street that is lining the opposite side of the street. What this provides, based on their market research and what their preferred development plan is, is to provide a zero-step entry from the street. Because of sloping defography, that provides no elevation change from the street level all through the front floor, or the first floor, excuse me. So through the front door, through the garage, there's no steps, making that friendly for In addition, just to note, Cassillon Street is right here in this plan. Cassillon Street was approved and platted in the original PD, however, it was never constructed. They are proposing to realign that slightly, just to take kind of a bit of the curve out. So you'll see mention of the vacation of the right-of-way within the plan. In addition, they're proposing the construction of two additional streets, as well as some trail connections and things that provide regional connectivity to some of the other trails in town, as well as the regional trails. And a little bit of staff analysis. When we went through the municipal code, one thing that's not explicit in the staff report that I do want to highlight is the open space definition in the municipal code specifically precludes the inclusion of residential lots in the open space calculation. So that's, it's defined in there slightly in the staff report, however, the official open space per code for this development is 27%. However, given the context of this development, staff's comfortable with that number, and I'll explain why. The original PD for the commercial use required 20% open space, and they were also given a 5% allotment for Tract K. So these, this application is proposing 25, or 27%. And let me go back and show you the site plan here a little bit. Tract K is essentially this open space right here. And because it was commercial use, essentially, had we been negotiating those two developments for both residential, it's staff's position that they most likely would have been allotted much greater than 5% of this open space. And essentially, Tract K will function more as open space for this new proposal development than the existing, as it's immediately adjacent. So we're comfortable with the 27% number from staff's perspective. As mentioned in the comprehensive plan, commercial use is preferred for this site, however, residential use is not precluded. When analyzing the town roadway standards, the only variance that we've identified is the design with attached sidewalks on the residential side of the street, and the applicant will go into greater detail as far as their motivation for that, but staff is comfortable with that deviation. As well as the parks, recreation, and trails, they are proposing to include trail connections that have been defined in the Trails Master Plan. And then just to note, within the conditions, there are two conditions that from staff's perspective are still kind of yet to be worked out. That includes the trail connection through Tract K. The condition states to be worked out through the final development process with staff. What that requires is some permitting approval to construct a trail through Rock Creek. So because it's going through a floodplain, at this point, there's a lot of permitting and things that are required. And so it's something that we can't show the final alignment on until we do some more engineering work through that permitting process. And the other item that's a condition in your staff, in the staff report is trail lighting. And that's something that the applicant and the town are still working through the details of, specifically where trail lighting would be, what's consistent throughout the rest of town on other trails, but we'd like your thoughts and perspectives on that. With that, we'll open it up for the applicant for his presentation. Sorry, let me get your wristband.
State your name and, name and address, please.
Chairperson Folsom, commission members. My name is Dave Euler. I'm the Vice President of Development Operations for Boulder Creek Builders. Our offices are 712 Main Street in Lewisville, Colorado. Also with me tonight is our President and one of the owners, Mr. David Zinke, and Ms. Leslie Uy from the Sinidis Group, who is our engineer, so hopefully between us all, we can answer any questions you may have. First of all, for the benefit of those of you folks who have been here for a while and know the story of the Calmonte community, I wanted to start off our presentation with a brief announcement that slightly over a week ago, we opened for sales once again after all these years, and we have four sales already. So folks are looking forward to becoming new Superior residents. So, let's see here, let's figure this out. Much of what I will say will be a repetition of what Ms. Ritchie said, but please bear with me. We are asking to amend the development plan for 39 senior-friendly, single-family patio homes. And I'll go into greater detail about exactly what we mean by that and what that entails. This type of use is encouraged in the town's comprehensive plan, and is something that is really, you know, not very prevalent anywhere, and certainly not in Superior. The overall density is less than four units per acre. If you factor in Tract K, which was dedicated prior, the density would be less than three units per acre. The single-family or single-loaded theater-style loading on the streets is something I'll discuss in a little bit greater detail as I explain the product type exactly, and it'll make a little bit more sense to you. We are also providing pretty significant setback from McCaslin Boulevard. I believe we're about 100 feet from the existing edge of asphalt. And one of the key components of what we're proposing is that this community will be totally maintained and covenant-controlled through homeowners' association. This is, again, an aerial view of the site, and you can see Calmonte Avenue existing and McCaslin and so on, and kind of defines a little triangular-shaped piece of land which was, is currently zoned for the commercial. This is a copy of our site plan, and it's, apologize, it's actually maybe, when I get to the landscaping plan, it'll be a little bit easier to see the driveways and streets and so on, and make it a little clearer picture to describe to you the single-loading configuration and so on. But what I did want to show was this sketch here, because we are asking for a variance from the normal standard procedures, which would ordinarily require that all the sidewalks be detached with a street, tree lawn, sidewalk. What we have discovered, because we build a significant portion of our housing, is for senior buyers and so on, and we have some very good firsthand experience that tells us that our buyers prefer, because of their age, the age of folks that visit them and so on, when they park in the street and get out and are approaching the house, they prefer not to be crossing the tree lawn to get to the sidewalk. So what we have proposed is where our homes butt or face the street, that we would have attached sidewalk. You'd still have the tree lawn, it would just be behind the sidewalk. On the other side of the street, we would have the detached walk. So in the map that we've got here, the dashed red line is the existing sidewalk and trails and so on on the site. The green line is the new bike paths that we're proposing to install. The, when you get onto the local streets, the orange line is where the homes face the street, and that's, that side is where we're proposing the attached sidewalk. The other side of the street is actually the rear of the next row of homes, and there we're going ahead and pulling the sidewalk off and detaching it, consistent with city standards, so that we can get the tree lawn and so on, because it, we don't view that as being the same sort of use constraint that it is where the homes face the street. So here we have a, this is a colored-up version of our landscape plan, and you can see on the, do we have a pointer? On this street, for example, right here, this is the row of homes which the driveways access this street, so that's where we propose that we have the attached sidewalk. And then, once we get away from the lots, then the sidewalk veers often becomes detached around this way, and anticipating that the majority of people that are visiting are going to be parking on this side of the street, and thereby will have access to the sidewalks. Part of the rationale behind the single-loaded streets is that, one of our key desires in our patio homes is that we have zero-in, zero-step entries into the homes. That is almost impossible on a standard lot configuration, where you have two rows of lots backing up each other with the street on each side. At least one side, the street will drain, or the lot will drain to the front. That means there's a lot of steps, and it's almost impossible to get zero entry. By doing this, we have the ability to do what in old-time terminology was called a type B drainage, where the lot drainage splits in the middle of the home, the front drains to the street, the back drains to the back, and that enables us to keep the drive, the garage up to the point where people could, pulling into their garage, can get into their home without having, ideally, no steps, or at worst, one step. And then the zero-step entry is carried further to, each of these homes has a front porch and a nice covered deck in the back, and those are designed also so folks can access those without going up or down steps. So by doing the single-loaded street, we are able to get virtually every lot in this community to be a type B drainage. So it, again, to fit our most accommodated or target market. This is just a short excerpt from the comp plan, which we refer to later, where the town has seen a need and a value to having a variety of housing types, and certainly what we are proposing to build here is, while it's not age-restricted, it is very, very age-targeted. This is a floor plan of one of the actual homes that we're proposing to build here. This is a brand-new, newly-designed series of homes that is designed with such things as, all hallways are four feet wide, all doorways are 36 inches wide, all of the bathrooms are oversized, all of the bedrooms are suites, every bedroom has its own dedicated bathroom. These are set up so that the main floor of the ranch-style home provides all the living area that the buyer needs, and it is further designed so that if they want to stay there to the bitter end, they can age in place, they know that the home is set up, there's no need to retrofit anything. All the showers are, roll-in entries on the showers. So this is, again, this is an actual floor plan of the series that we're proposing to build here, which, by the way, for those that are interested in, is called the Easy House. So, following up on that, this is a artist's rendering, obviously, of the typical architecture. These are elevation Bs and Cs. As you folks know from proving this sort of thing in the past, most builders have a home and it's got an elevation A, an elevation B, and an elevation C. And as you go up, the price goes up, and they look nicer. They have more foo-foo on them. One of the things that we quickly realized on the site was that a higher level of exterior finish was in order. So these are only conceptual drawings, these are still in the works, but what this shows is our new elevation D, which is tile roofs, stucco, a lot more stone detailing around the windows, iron railings and things like that. So our plan here is that this is going to be a very, very nice, upper-end community, it's going to fit architecturally with the existing townhomes and so on. One of the things that is included in our proposal, in the site plan and in the product, is that we have a mix of both front-entry garages and side-entry garages, so we get a variety in the streetscape, so that we don't have a sea of garage doors, and we also don't have the fronts of the homes all lined up. What this is, is, these are actual pictures of patio homes that we build in a community in Longmont, and the point behind this is to show that where we have the side-entry garages, we get a lot more architectural detailing, excuse me, get a lot more architectural detailing and, and features fronting the street. And so you're, again, you're not driving down the street just seeing a sea of garage This is an artist's rendering of these homes and how they look, and note the attached sidewalk. But it also shows here, you know, as you're going down the street, this is a side-entry garage, but from this angle, you literally see nothing but house. There is, there is no garage door apparent at all. So there's a, there's a mix in this series of side-entry and front-entry to give us that variety. So, in summation, we're proposing to build homes and a community that is targeted for senior-friendly living. It is for active adult buyers. It's all main-floor living. Many of these homes will have finished areas in the basements, but the entire home is designed so that all the living is upstairs. That's auxiliary space for children that move home and things like that. We're requesting the variance on the ability to attach sidewalks where it benefits the access for our buyers. These homes are designed for seniors with mobility issues, or elderly live-in parents, or just, you know, move-back children. But it's very specifically targeted for the senior buyer. Wider doors, wider hallway, zero-step entry, and so on, as I mentioned. This is a type of housing that we think is desperately needed in every community that we build, and certainly would be beneficial for the housing mix in the Town of Superior. And with that, we would like to offer to answer any questions you folks may have.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. We can do questions of staff and/or the applicant. Go ahead with that. Any questions? Start on that end.
Okay. Start, start. The original Calmonte, Calmonte, development was much greater, larger, and so is this, is this the same plating, or is this a sub-plating of the other one?
The, when the original plat was done, which included 75 fiveplex townhomes and four lots that were designated for the commercial, this is a replat of those four lots. So if we go back to, here, let me see. Probably shows up best here. The confines of the project is along the westerly boundary of Calmonte Avenue, down along the right-of-way line for McCaslin, and then along the right-of-way line for Colton. Though that area was platted, and there was also the platted Cassillon Street. So within this area, there were two lots. Within this area, backing up to the floodplain, there were two lots. So there were four platted lots that would be replatted and that would be subject to this comp plan or site plan amendment.
So the proposed development now turns that floodplain area that we talked about along Colton to a new open space that's counted in the 27%?
The, we do, we do not propose to mess around in the floodplain at all. We are, in that 27%, we were taking, correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie, for...
5%?
We took no credit for the, for the open space, the 27%.
So our open space...
You could start with your name, name and address.
My name is Wesley Uy. I'm with the civil engineer for the Boulder Creek Builders. My firm is the Sinidis Group, and I'm located at 801 Main Street in Lewisville, Colorado.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. All right. So, out there's two outlots.
If you could speak into the mic as much as possible, thanks.
If I can get this straight. All right. So Tract K generally follows this boundary and around, back towards along McCaslin and back up Colton Road. This Tract K was platted with the original Calmonte development. We are proposing no changes to this platted area. Around the lot, we have, in this situation, Outlet A, tracing along and back around here. And then we have another outlot that wraps around these homes through here, that's Outlet B. It's Outlet A and B that are counted towards our 27%.
Okay. All right. So then, the easements that are being abandoned on the new proposed development plating, how is that going to affect the stuff that's above Calmonte Boulevard? To the, to the east?
It will not have any impact on the existing townhome area. It is only, there are some easements through here, there's the right-of-way and so on. So we're basically just kind of clearing this, cleaning the slate, if you will, on the commercial lots, and then we will plat the new easements to accommodate the new utilities and gas and electric and those sorts of things. And if I may, on the subject of the open space, one of the things that I neglected to mention, and I think it's key when we, especially when we talk about the open space, is that a component of our proposal here is that what we call barrier-free lots. And by that we mean, we do not install nor do we allow fences along the lot lines. The, all of the open space, our open space that we're responsible for, and all of the landscaping and so on, on each of these lots, will be maintained by the HOA. So part of the plan is that you have an apparent open space, which is much larger than it really is, because the open space behind the lots and the lot itself blend together. It's all maintained consistently. The, you know, we do all the landscaping, and so when the HOA comes in here with their subcontractor to do the mowing, why, the entire community will get mowed. So it looks much more park-like than a, than a normal community does. And in addition to the grass mowing and that sort of thing, the HOA also is responsible for the snow removal on all the sidewalks, and a certain level of exterior maintenance on the homes themselves, so that we get a, get a really nice-looking community that seems like it has even more open space than, than the numbers we're throwing around.
Okay. So at the entry to the middle street, I can't remember, it starts with a C again?
Cassillon.
Cassillon. It has some retaining walls up there along Calmonte Boulevard?
Yes.
On either side, as well as there's one further down, kind of divides the midline. What is causing that? Is it just the drainage difference?
It's a very, it's a very steep slope. The side is very steep, and our hopes are that when we get to the final engineering, that some of those retaining walls will go away. What we wanted to do at this stage was say, hey, folks, there's a good chance there's going to be retaining walls here, and here, and here, and here, and all over the place, because this, this street itself is...
8%?
8%, which is pretty steep for a residential street. So we wanted all of us to understand that it might be necessary to have those, but we're going to go to great extremes not to have them, and where we do have to have them, they will be all enough that they meet the town's criteria for not having to have guardrails and things like that.
Okay. Because as I see them, the lots being in the proximity as they are, to do the traditional B grading, proposing, you're talking about, normally would run a swell between those two dwellings, and they're pretty tight. I guess I'm more concerned with the overall drainage to the development as it relates to the floodplain area, Rock Creek?
We are, we are well out of the existing floodplain. We do not intend to mess in the floodplain at all, which is one of the issues that's in front of us and the town staff, is how do we get this desired crossing across there and meet all the criteria and so on? You know, it's, we've expressed to the staff, we understand the desire, we want to work with you, but we all understand, when we get to the engineering stage and so on, it just may not be possible to make that work because of floodplain considerations and so on, but that's our goal.
Okay. I guess I don't hear any more questions. I guess I don't really hear any more questions. Okay.
Commissioner Dozer?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions, so bear with me. The tree lawn that you talk about, oops, let me put on my speaker. The tree lawn that you talk about, I think it's eight feet from one of the drawings I saw, on the side anyway, where the sidewalk would be set back and the tree lawn would be, I mean, the tree lawn would be in front and the sidewalk would be set back eight feet. On the other side, where the sidewalk is along the street and no setback, and I don't have a problem with that, I'm just trying to understand the trees. Because what I saw, on there, you didn't have a tree in front of every home, even though I did see it talked about in the proposal.
Sure.
There are quite a number of utilities running to the fronts of the homes and they're restricting where we can plant the trees. So that's why it's not as regular of an interval as you're seeing on the opposite side of the street, where we may have a single sewer service running to a home.
Okay.
So we're trying to meet the spacing requirements for the trees and for the utilities. And as we go into final design, we'll try to massage those even more to see if we can add more on the side of the street that the homes are facing towards.
Right, right. Okay. The other side, but great. And then, you know, what we seem to have always in the past is that people talk about all the trees and landscaping they're going to do and then they never do it. So I'm not suggesting that you'll do it that way, because what I've seen is fine from other developments that you've had, but I just want to make sure that we incorporate enough landscaping that fits the development and actually gives someone green there. And so then, on the side with the garages, where the loading of the garages, that side then, you have the sidewalk, which is five feet, and I'd like to see it wider if it could be, but five feet is kind of hard even to get out of if you've got, you know, a walker or something, or our kids are coming to see the grandparents. But if you've got that, then you have eight feet, that's pretty much the front yard, right?
The setbacks.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry to make you get up and down less.
Oh, no, that's quite fine. So what we have set up are for homes that have the side-loaded garage, there's an additional 10 feet of space to that side-loaded garage. So you have a combination of the eight plus the 10, so it's 18 feet.
Okay.
Where we have the front-loaded garages, we have a setback of 15 feet. And then the garages have, the front of the garages have to be at least 20 feet from the back walk to the front of the garage to allow a car to park without obstructing the sidewalk.
Okay. So from the inside of the sidewalk, not the street side of the sidewalk, you have to have 20 feet from that to the front of the garage?
When they're front-loaded.
Right, right. Understand. Okay. Thank you. Now, and then the elevation D, I loved your elevation D vision. How are you going to incorporate that in with C, with your elevation C design? Do you have any idea, are you going to have one that looks like the rest of the Calmonte was, you know, stucco, it looked like it had stucco or something on it? And then you have others that maybe have shingles and things like that? Or is there any concept right now about how that might work?
The short answer is no.
Okay. That's fine. I just, you know, if I was buying the D concept, I'd like to have more of the elevation Ds around me than elevation Cs. I'm just kind of thinking out loud about that.
Understand.
Okay. 3.8 homes per acre is really dense. And that's two times denser than what we require for residential medium density. So I'm a little concerned about how dense it is and how close all the houses are. So we're talking about 10 feet apart, basically, five feet from one to the next and then five feet. So if there's a window over there, I could reach out and touch my neighbor, so to speak? Well, do you plan on windows in between those houses?
Yes, there are. And one of the things that we need to kind of think about is, again, these are patio homes. And by their very nature, they're a lot of home on not very much lot. If you're familiar with our patio home community that we build in Lewisville, there's significantly less open space between the homes and around the homes in that community than there is here. Part of the, if you will, attractiveness of what we have to offer is the community that it builds of like-minded people who go in buying exactly what they know they're buying and are buying a place that they're not focused on the yard, they're more focused on their neighbors. And the ability to say, wow, let's take a trip this weekend and lock the door and be gone and not worry about the home, because the HOA is maintaining everything on the outside. So yes, they are close together. And yes, the yards are small, which is part of the reason for our emphasis on the really nice rear decks, the really nice front porches and so on. And what we find is like in our Steel Ranch community in Lewisville, is a neighborhood potlucks all the time, because everybody is of the same mind. And I would kind of compare that anecdotally to I Live in Anthem, which is a comparable sort of arrangement and...
What's the density there?
The gross density is pretty low, because there's 700 acres of open space. But our HOA dues reflect that, too.
Yes.
But I would tell you that since I moved into Anthem, I have never partied as much in my life when I was 20 as I do now. So that's the kind of community that we build, is people that kind of come together because there are common interests and so on, who are really not interested in a big yard that they're not going to use anyway. They use the decks and they use the front yards to talk to their neighbors.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to this concept at all. I'm just thinking about how close the homes are. And if you've got them that close, 10 feet apart, you basically just have a little walkway in between them. And so landscaping or creating the runoff, like you were talking about, swells and things to go down to the Rock Creek is kind of difficult. And I just have a concern about having it so dense without really understanding how that's going to work. Any window where, again, you can basically reach out and touch the person in their window or on their yard is kind of disconcerting for a lot of people. So I would just recommend that you not have too many windows on the sides that are right looking into somebody else's house. But again, the density bothers me. I don't have any problem with the concept at all. I love the concept. And I love the landscaping in the backyards and the ability to easily load into the front and all that. So I like that. I'm just a little worried about the density, which is two times as much as we would have for a residential medium-density place. Okay. So, and the HOA, is the Calmonte HOA along with the other townhomes?
No, this will be a standalone, separate sub-association.
Okay, thank you.
That will just be responsible for these 39 homes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the roads and the streets, which were public and which are private?
They are all public.
Including the private drive?
There are no private streets. These are all public streets. The, correct me if I'm wrong, the right-of-way and the widths and everything are per city standards. They're built to city standards with the one exception of our request to attach the sidewalk on one side.
Okay, 34 feet wide is the standard. I think I remember that. And Alex is shaking his head, nodding his head, I mean. Okay, so these are all the private drive, it's attached up to that one little loop around? Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
That is private, but that's a separate association. That's the Townhome Association. So on that side, there are private drives and so on that are the responsibility of the association, that are not maintained by the city. But that association of ultimately 75 homes will be separate from this one and is, I mean, other than they're in proximity and may share a name, there's no real connection.
Okay. So then when it comes to snow removal, I saw also it said that the town would be responsible for snow removal for the public streets. But that would be per the schedule of snow removal based on number of inches and also the type of street it is, because we start with major arterials and da-da-da-da-da. So I think, just for your understanding, the chances of snow being removed in A and B is probably pretty slim. So just want to make sure you're aware of that.
We understand that.
Okay. And then, okay, just a minute, excuse me, I should have made a better list of this. Okay, so the setbacks, we talked about them. And then the open space, I'm not too concerned about the open space because of the Track K that's there and also the great job you sure going to do about creating a nice space behind the homes. I don't think there's much room, again, like I said, beside the homes, so I don't know how you're going to do that. And in front, and then the trees, we've already talked about that, because I was looking for the one tree per lot that you're committing to, and I didn't see that in every case. But, and then 75% rock or non-living, I think, you know, I'm not all for creating a lot of irrigated landscaping anymore, because we're in a desert, high-plained desert. But I do like to see some green, that that can be through trees and shrubbery and other things like that. And then, talked about the sidewalk. The sidewalk being that five feet, if it can be wider, that would be great, because, you know, getting a lot of people and things out of cars is, if that's a consideration, that would be good one. Especially on the side where you're actually getting people out and into the houses. Now, off-street parking, it says there's 156 total, so I assume that's based on the number of cars that can park along all of these streets, including the Calmonte Drive?
Um...
There's four spaces per unit, it says.
It's, every home has two, every home has two spaces in the garage and two spaces on the driveway.
Okay. So it isn't, it isn't four additional, it's just off-street, so it's not off-street, it's two in the garage and two on-street, per unit?
No. Two in the driveway, two on-street.
Oh, so you're counting two in the driveway. Okay.
So we have the ability to park that many cars without having a car on the street.
Okay. How are you, what are you planning for the parking along the street? And the limitations or the amount of time people can actually leave a car parked on the street? Are you going to have, or what are your expectations for that?
You know, to be honest, I don't know what our typical covenants have for not parking beyond X period of time or...
They'll be public streets, so they'll have to abide by our standards, which are a certain number of hours.
At the very least, they would abide by your standards, if not be more restrictive.
Okay. I think that's important for you to understand, as you're also talking to your potential residents, that, you know, there are certain limitations, how long you can leave a car parked on the street in Superior. Okay, on public streets. And then, okay, to conclude, and then the other, I think my last question is, how big are these homes on the average, of what size?
The main floor goes from the high 1700s to the low 2000s. And then the additional space in the lower level is another 1,000 to 1,200. So they go from the mid-twos to the threes in finished space. But again, the primary living space is all in the main floor. We have developed our procedure whereby we have this additional space, the bonus space in the lower level, which are all nine-foot ceilings and so on. So it's really nice, oversized windows, oversized window walls and so on, so you don't feel like you're in a lower level. But those are auxiliary spaces, if you will, you know, like another bedroom suite and a great room or something like that, another bathroom, those sorts of things. But they're, at the end of the day, two-ish to three-ish thousands.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is timing. When, how long do you think it would take you to build out these homes?
We are, right now, our focus is on getting all of the approvals and so on. We know that there's going to be a pretty lengthy development process here because of the soils in the area. So we're going to have to do the same thing that was done originally in Calmonte. It would be pretty significant over excavation and so on. And beyond that, we haven't really set a target date to get it open. We've more set a target date to get it approved, so we can get our development done and then figure out kind of where we're at, see what the market says then and so on. One of the things that we're very cognizant of is that we do not want to hurt the sales of the townhomes, which have been languishing for a long time and which are really just now starting to come back to life. So our focus, from a marketing perspective, is on those. And we want to get this ready so we can work it into the marketing program as makes sense, depending on what the economy tells us we can do.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go through Commissioner Rittmuster's comments that she sent in by email. She wasn't able to be here tonight. She had a concern about the driveway lengths, and I think that was addressed in your last question, the 20-foot lengths. Her concern was that larger-sized vehicles might be sticking out over sidewalks, and so I think that question's been answered.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Her second point was asking if you could address what groundwater assessments have been done?
The preliminary solstice test that we did prior to the purchase, the repurchase of the entire Calmonte site, did not show groundwater shallow in this area at all. We will be, in conjunction with our final engineering, doing a much more detailed geotechnical study to determine the depth and extent of the overX and so on. But at this point, groundwater's really a non-issue for this location.
Okay. Okay. I think that covers, I think that covers her questions. I had a couple myself. Cassillon Street is already, has a curb cut on McCaslin.
Yes.
And I think the intention was to provide better access to commercial spaces. Was there any thought given to eliminating that curb cut and making it a cul-de-sac instead of going out onto McCaslin? Because I read your traffic studies and you're way below capacities on all of those streets. And in some ways, I think people would prefer not to, or they'd prefer to be on a cul-de-sac instead of a through-street, perhaps. And so wondering if there was any consideration given to that at all?
Honestly, no, there wasn't. We just operated under the assumption that since it was an accent, access, well, excuse me, access points existing and desired originally, that probably the desire was to be there. As you identified, the traffic on, from all of this going on to Calmonte is still well below what triggers a designation for a collector's street. So there's, it would work. There's an awful lot of slope in this area. I do not know what the physical constraints might be to that. But, you know, I guess the short answer to your question is, no, we did not look at that.
Okay. That would be something I would think, if it would be something you'd consider, I think it would be an asset to the project, because it's, that street is very close to Colton. And to me, I don't think it adds, I think if anything, it takes away.
We could certainly look at it as...
Again, that's, I don't know if that's shared. We can get into discussions as we go further tonight and see if anyone else shares that concern. And that could give you better guidance whether to go down that path or not. Sort of on the same line of thinking on Calmonte, where it intersects with McCaslin, you've got some homes, you've got homes that are fairly close to that intersection. One thing I like about your design is you've got, every driveway is facing north or northeast. So for melt-off, snow melting, that is great. But the, my thought is, is those two homes that are to the closest to McCaslin, if they were flipped and faced Cassillon, faced to Cassillon cul-de-sac instead, then you're not dumping out, you're not backing out into quite so close to that intersection. Now, that may not work in terms of your drainage and steps and, you know, it may not work with the topography, but it's just a thought that...
That also is something we can look at in the final engineering and see if that can be made to work.
And again, it, I think if I were one of those homeowners, I would rather, I'd rather be backing out on that cul-de-sac than I would, you know, 50 feet from the intersection where all my neighbors are coming out. So that, one thought there.
Okay.
The final question I had was, the staff had condition number seven, which was... was add some more sod. And I think Commissioner, was this, was this what you were addressing, Commissioner Dozel?
Yes, I don't know if we need more sod anywhere, but greenery is...
I think one of the things the staff asked us to do was see if we couldn't, at the, at the main intersections, do a little bit more formal landscaping, if you will, than what we had proposed and we had agreed to.
What is, what is happening on the, on the south side of Calmonte? There's nothing shown there for landscaping on the south side, at that, at the entry.
That's off the side. Are you, are you going about along this line?
No.
South?
No, over, to the right side of the...
Very right, yes, yes.
Well, that is, basically, it's native grass right now.
Okay.
It's, it's...
Is that where...
As I recall, that street is very close to the property line.
So, David Sinkey, Boulder Creek Builders, seven twelve main street. That lower right-hand corner has some current landscaping there, there's an entry monumentation for Calmonte.
Yes.
There's also some trees and other things in, in that area, and then back behind it is sort of native grasses, like you see in the rest of Calmonte.
Okay.
And then immediately, it's maybe right here, you go off property.
Okay. And where is, where is the area, area or areas that staff is recommending more, more sod?
As I understand, we're talking about at the, at the intersections.
Okay.
I, I understand it correctly.
Okay.
We're talking about at the intersections to try to have a nicer sense of reliable, if you will, to the community than...
Okay.
And, and again, as, as we all know, this is the preliminary version, and, and it was honestly kind of a, somewhat of a fire drill to get it all pulled together so we could get here. But we, we have, the, the staff has asked us to do nothing, that, that we have just thrown our hands up and said, "That is, that's just a hill I'm willing to die for." I mean, we, it's, it's been very cordial discussions and they've been very willing to work with us, and we have expressed our willingness to work with them and iron out the details as we get to, through the process and, and plan, and plan preparation. So, I, I think we can easily accommodate what staff has asked us to do.
Okay. Commissioner McCool?
Nothing at this point, all my questions have been answered.
Okay.
I have a couple. One was about the planting of materials, which you answered, and fencing, so thank you for that, because that's all going to be under the covenants. The other one I had, I think, Commissioner Dozel, the two that I have, she touched on. My question wasn't, when were you going to get started, but there's a phase one and a phase two. Are they going to, you're still going to have a phase one and a phase two, and are they going to be pretty close together? Are they going to, are, are your plans to have them built for their part?
The, the reason that we ask for phasing wherever we can is to accommodate minimizing the amount of money that we spend in development and so on, and to facilitate the public improvements and so on. You know, in an, in an ideal world, which we always hope for, we get phase one developed and jump in there and start selling homes and say, "Oh, my gosh, we've got to get out there and build phase two, because sales are going crazy." So, but it's, it's really driven, when, when we phase, it's really driven by the market demand that says, "We need those lots for, for the sales program." The, our normal approach to a community like this is that we hope to sell around two and a half a month, so at that, this entire community is only slightly over a year's worth of sales, if everything goes well. So, that, that's, that, again, in the preliminary stages, we are asking for that flexibility so that everyone that we're working with at staff level is, you know, kind of been informed early on that it's something we'd like to pursue, but it's all subject to what's acceptable to the town as we go to the final stages. You know, if, if it turns out that the conclusion is that's, that's just not okay, then we'll work with town's desires.
The other one was about the setbacks. There's two things on the plans, I just lost my eye. It says setbacks, exterior design elements of buildings such as eaves, dormers, bay windows, and deck stairs may encroach up to thirty inches into side, front, and rear yard setbacks. So, if there's only ten feet in between the houses, that leaves it like, what, two and a half feet on each side, so five feet between, is that okay with the fire department?
And, and that's not the intent with that wording, the, the steps on, on the decks and so on come out the back. It's just kind of generic to throw everything, say, "These are all the things we'd like to be able to encroach, and we'd like to be able to encroach anywhere," but we certainly can pull those out, out of the, the side setback, because that's not the intent at all.
And then there's another one, it says building cantilevers may project twelve inch, inches into side yard setback. So, you know, unless that's on the, as long as it's not on the interior lot line, that's fine, if it's on the exterior lot line.
There, there is one home in this series that has a very small twelve-inch cantilever that goes on the side, and that is specifically to, to facilitate that particular house. If we get less than five feet, then of course, as you say, we, from the building perspective, we have to comply with the fire code and all of that things, so there's frequently additional construction requirements associated with that sort of an encroachment, but that, that's the reason that, that is requested.
I guess my concern was if both houses on the interior lot line wanted to encroach twelve inches, that that...
It's, it's only on that one home, and we do not build adjacent, homes adjacent to each other that are the same plan.
Okay. Yeah, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's do public comment now, and we'll start with Mr. Pickle with Prostag. If you could limit, if all the public could limit comments to more than five minutes, and just watch the light on that podium.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners, Brent Pickle, Prostag Chair. If we could go back, I don't know if it's possible, to the staff presentation, I think it was their third slide.
This one?
Yep.
That's it.
Okay. Staff had penciled in some trails that we have here, and let me see if I can get this. I guess it's a challenge to get it to work, but, what am I doing, oh, I've got to turn the end? Oh, there it is, okay. So, staff had prepared some, roughed in some trail connections. The next big trail that we have on our trails plan is to extend the trail that goes along the east side of McCaslin, south, and bring it, and bring it up McCaslin, up to Indiana on the southern part. This, this proposal has a lot of good things for us. The big problem we have with that is, right here, where Rock Creek goes under McCaslin, is a, is a box culvert that is literally just as wide as the highway. So, obviously, the shoulder here is only about three feet, so we need to find a way, which town staff has done with the developer, to, to find the nearest line of sight where we can get across the creek and bring the trail around. Plus, we also have an existing hard surface trail right here. So, this would allow us to get a lot of, you know, basically around half of what we want to get with that trail connection, and expand the trail network and get us over the creek. So, that's good for us. Looking ahead to the future, the town has not accepted, from what I understand, this trail connection to Indiana, so in the future, hopefully that would be something that we could, would be improved and with the additional development. And I had one other comment, when it comes time, just for the developer, it'd be nice if we could find a way to, to, so people don't have to come all the way around into the existing trail network, if we can try to develop a trail connection around the cul-de-sac there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, and just one more thing, this is a really great area, I never had the chance to be up there, but I think it's got a lot of potential, so I think it's going to be very nice. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other public comment? Okay, Mr. Hernillo.
Alex Hernillo, Public Works Director, just to follow up on Mr. Pickle's comments, this trail was on, on the trails plan, and as we were looking at this, well, let's connect it up. Well, we had that problem with the box culverts there, and we don't have any plans right now for expanding that, maybe in the future, but we did want to make, make the connection to, to the roundabout and to the, the trailhead, but we also have the potential here of, of making the connection to the, the trail that goes under, under Colton, so, but it, by make, angling off and using part of their trail, and we think we can, we can do a low water crossing, and that's where, where the staff's condition comes in, is that to put that on us on the developer. So, what we decided is that we want to work together with them, we would take the lead and try and get the approvals through urban drainage, the Army Corps, whatever approvals need to be done to get that, that crossing in place. They'll, they'll pay for the actual construction, but we don't know if that's feasible, so I think we'll have joint partnership going forward to try and make that, make that connection, and hopefully, as we get forth in the process, we'll have more details on it. So, that's what the nature of the ambiguous work together, trying to make, make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, my name is Maureen Canmueller, and I'm a Rock Creek resident at twenty-three thirty-five Andrew Drive in Superior. And my question is, I think more for the Commissioners, and that is, I, I was part last year when we had a lot of discussions on the comprehensive plan, and part of thirty-seven of my neighbors were here one evening, we had another hundred of us, that signed a petition against rezoning the land that is just north of Colton Road, that plot that's there, from commercial to residential. And we still stand firmly against that. And I'd like to know, what is the thought behind, from the Commissioner's standpoint, of changing this after we just went through a very long and difficult comprehensive plan, that when a developer comes and asks for it, without a lot of thought to what the neighbors have already very clearly stated? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Last chance.
Heidi Howard at twenty-seven thirty-three Slate Court, I'm a Rock Creek resident. Just had some questions. Was wondering if there's been any market research done to determine if there's actually market demand for this kind of community and needs? I think your comments are great, I'd just like to know if there's actually a need for this kind of development in Rock Creek right now? I'd like to better understand how the traffic is, where the traffic is going to be routed to. Is all this going to be coming out on Indiana, and then on Calmonte, onto McCaslin? So, these thirty-nine homes, in addition to Calmonte one, so if you could explain that as well?
Okay, thank you. So, we're now, I think that's it for public comment, seeing that everyone here has spoken. We're now at the point where the applicant can have some final comments, if you'd like and want to address any of the public comments or any of our, further address any questions, welcome to do so.
Even though I have read our traffic report a number of times, I can't honestly tell you where all the traffic goes, but the majority of the traffic goes out Calmonte to Colton, as it does right now. One of the things that they specifically looked at, and this is kind of related, but not really, was the question of, are there a lot of people cutting through the community to avoid the roundabout? And the conclusion was, no, a few, but, but very, very few. But the majority of traffic from this location, as I recall, and please bear with me, I'm going by memory from the, the report, but the majority of the traffic goes generally to the north, with some going to the south, and of course, the majority of that would probably go out and, and Calmonte again, and head south. I don't, I don't know, from a, from a traffic perspective, obviously, the, this area over here, the townhomes, has to go to Indiana, nothing changes there. There is no connection from Calmonte to Indiana, so I don't see much traffic funneling onto that. In regards to the question of, of the rezoning, a lot of years have told us that this, this site is not going to develop as commercial, it's just not. Commercial does not develop on the edge of a metropolitan area, there's no demand for We know from specializing in this type of product that there is a huge demand for housing that people can buy and not have to worry about, at some point in their life, they're going to have to move out. We know that because we sell lots of homes to those folks. Market study for this specific site, no, we, we have not. We do know that there's a very limited amount of this housing in, in Superior, and it's a pretty clear conclusion for us that we need some. So, I, I think that answer those things, I do know that Mr. Sinkey had one, one or two points that he wanted to make in wrapping up, if we may.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, I'll make this very quick, not to, but my associate here, we actually do have market studies for Calmonte in this area. Superior is actually the, one of the textbook examples of a community that is in need of R-Park type in particular. About ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, this entire community built out largely as a bedroom community, started out as a bedroom community to Boulder, and there was, that's where families came to, to create, you know, a wonderful opportunity for their kids to grow up. And just purely doing the math, you take a look at those numbers of families that moved here during that timeframe, they are now coming into that period of their life where they would love to stay in Superior. That's, we, we hear this constantly, the people that, that showed up to our various events to kick Calmonte off have told us, "We love Superior, we don't want to leave Superior, it's a fantastic community, but my house is too big, it's not oriented for the lifestyle that we currently have." And the market studies that we have basically show us that, that Superior is off the charts right for this type of development. I'll make a, a quick comment about density. The entirety of the design of this product is, I, I think your observation is a good one, and when you're given site plans and, and a couple of artistic renderings, it's difficult to get a sense for how these homes really live. And there's been a lot of intent put into the design of the homes, so that they live very much to the front, and, and even to a higher degree, to the back of the home. And if you visit this site, and the way that we have this theater loaded, the feeling in these homes, the, the primary open living spaces are to the back of the house, and they live out windows and decks and doors and glass right out to the back. To, to answer your question about windows on the sides, we love to take advantage of natural light, but on the sides of the homes, we typically use transoms. So, the homes are oriented on the interior, for example, one of the interior windows, or the interior wall windows, as you'll see, are actually in the master bathroom, and it's a transom window, it's way above where you could see out of it, but you get lots of nice light coming in, so you get the benefit of an exterior wall, but there's no privacy issues at all. So, the entirety of the, of the design is really intended to live out the front and the back of the house. If we were to add, you know, to take it sort of to its logical conclusion, if we added, say, another five or ten feet in between the homes, basically what you create is sort of an even more difficult space to maintain. All of a sudden, now, maybe there's enough room to actually put some sod down in there, and you feel compelled to, to do those types of things. It makes the maintenance of the homes actually much more difficult. So, it, when you get homes to a certain degree of closeness, it's, we would actually prefer, you know, that the homes be even closer. Calmonte, the current townhomes are an example of, that's exactly the type of living that we're going for here, and they're actually attached. And that attached living doesn't deter our, our buyers at all, and you don't even get the benefit of that, that light coming in. So, for any of you who haven't visited the exact, existing Calmonte, gives you sort of an extreme view of how a home can live very, very well without having windows that, that access side to side. And from a, a density standpoint, I'm not at all concerned about the density from a market acceptance perspective, our densities at Steel Ranch are probably close to double this, and, and, you know, it, people absolutely love to live there, because we're orienting those outdoor spaces to parks and views, and that's certainly the case in, in this situation. So, I very much appreciate those comments. comments, and we spend an enormous amount of design time trying to make sure that these homes live really, really well on the insides, front to back. And with that, I think we're done with our comments.
Alex Aronel, Public Works Director, to answer the traffic question. The traffic study assumes that about 10% of the traffic would be headed south, about 50% would be headed north on McCaslin, and about 40% headed east on Colton. And the total trips estimated are about 664 vehicle trips per day, which is much less than the, no, and that actually includes the townhomes too. So actually, the single-family housing is only going to generate 370 trips per day, the 39 lots. So Calmonte is expected to generate the 660 trips. The original traffic study for this development had projected 4,200 vehicle trips per day. So it's a lot less than what was originally planned. For our modeling purposes, in terms of transportation planning, we were assuming some office space that would generate about 780 trips per day for this particular parcel. So it's less than what's in the transportation plan, and it's much less than what was in the original traffic study.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's a couple of conditions that are suggested by staff that have not been, you know, talked about. Do you want to do that when you have your discussion, or?
Well, since we'll be closing the public hearing, we should probably hear from staff before we do that, since we can't have interaction after we close the public hearing. So let's go ahead and have any comments you have on those. I'd also like to give the developer the opportunity to point out the materials they were, that they brought in to us, that we haven't had any discussions on materials, and that might be useful to have, if you wanted to point out any of those, turn the lights back on and take a look at the, take a look at those.
You want to do that first?
Sure, let's do that first, and then we'll talk about the conditions. So if one of you wants to talk about the, if one of you wants to go through these materials, that'd be great.
Sure. You know, the materials that we have in front of you are representative of what might be used out there. The current Calmonte townhomes are very much a style that we think is appropriate for the area, and we would want that to meld. The color palettes will be more varied than the current Calmonte townhomes. Those buildings are all pretty much the same color. They get their architectural style through the roof massing, the tile roofs, and the use of stone. These homes, because they are individual homes, will have a lot more color variation, and that's what this exterior color matrix attempts to depict. We put together swatches of various colors that go together, and this is just a representative version of that. And of course, the elevation indeed that we showed you also includes some tile roofing, which we don't have displayed here. So really, this is just a representative sample. We use a huge number of different stone colors and styles, a huge number. We actually use at least three, if not four, color paint schemes on the exterior of the homes when we're painting them. And to go beyond that, I don't know that I would probably be getting too far in the weeds for today to get many further than that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I'll just mention that there's, in the, in the staff's suggested conditions in the resolution, we've covered a number of those. One of them is that the conceptual trail alignment, which is shown on one of the slides, in fact, that slide right there. We will finalize that with them, and we've talked with them about that, and the low water crossing and so on, to get the connections that we feel will work. But we'll have to do that in the final development plan stage when we do, they do, basically the final engineering. But we'll work together with them on that. But that needs to be included as a condition. The other thing along the trails, we're suggesting some lighting, and it's primarily the trail that, here we go, it's primarily starting from about here and along in here. We would think probably we might have a blight down here, but we're going to get some spillover light from the streetlights. So we're not talking about lighting along the sidewalks because those streets are all going to be lit. And it's just in, when we get out in this area here, we're talking about a lighting plan that we would work out with them that's reasonable, put it that way. We would require them to meet our lighting standard, and we would want some kind of a light that's probably preferred, it's on a pole. But it's a residential and a trail-type light. We've got these in some of the other developments that we've worked on, lighting, for example, over at Remington Homes. We went through all that in terms of lighting their trails. So that would be really the stretch of the trail that has to have, or could probably use some lighting. The rest of them will get, there's lighting along McCaslin, there'll be spillover lighting along the trails, along the major streets within the development as well as exterior to it. Calmonte is also lit by streetlights. So that one, that's one, another one. We want to make sure that all, it's understood that all patio decks and covers shall be within the building setbacks, and they can clarify the side setback issues in terms of encroachments. We've asked that the street lighting be LED. That sort of conforms with what we're doing now with our street lighting, rather than halogen lights. When they do their final easements for their final plat, we want to make sure that the trail easements, that are connections, that any trails that are going to be maintained by the town, that the easement is at least eight feet, so that we can get in there with a machine or wherever we need to do for maintenance purposes. And then we have already talked about doing a little bit more work on the entryways in terms of the landscaping. So I think that covers the conditions that we have for both the Plan Development Amendment, as well as the, we had three conditions for the preliminary plat, and those basically covering the same things.
What's the third one for the preliminary plat? I only see two.
The one is, the third one, the third one is, first of all, we have make minor technical red line corrections, that one. We've got that the, do a conceptual trail alignment through track case, it'll be finalized by the town staff and the applicant prior to the final plat, okay? And then the last one was the same one about trail easements need to be a minimum of eight feet where we're going to have the responsibility as the town to maintain it. So that's in the resolution under Section 3.
Okay.
It's in the resolution.
Okay, it just wasn't on, I was looking at the staff report, it wasn't here.
No, it's in the resolution.
Yes, it is. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
That's all I had.
Thank you. We're at the point where I'm about to close the public hearing, so if there's any further questions from the commission for developer or staff, now would be a good time to do that. Commissioner Duzell?
Yes, I just want to be clear that what we'd be approving tonight is this amendment, changing it from commercial to residential. And the actual placement of the homes and the number of homes and all that will be determined in the final development plan.
The, well, I think we get this straight here. They're proposing a preliminary plat of 39 lots. That means of 39 units. We don't expect a heavy deviation from that number. The preliminary plat is exactly what it is. It's a preliminary plat. As they do the final plat, they may change it slightly for one reason or another, because they're going to run into issues with easements and utilities and so on, and that may shift if they, something that happens in a final plat. But I expect that they'll be come back with 39 units.
Okay.
So it'll just be more refined and it'll be firm, because once you do a final plat and approve it, then that's how they can market those lots. That's how they can legally market those lots. And the other one was, what was the other one you had?
Well, I was just thinking about some of the suggestions that Commissioner Folsom had about changing possibly, you know, the loading of the homes, a couple of them, and having the cul-de-sac be there instead of going on to McCaslin. Those are good suggestions, I think, that should be considered. So if we, if we approved this, could those things be changed in the final development?
Yeah, I think what you would do is, is you could have a list of maybe those suggestions, because they have to do a final development plan.
Certainly.
You're absolutely correct. What we're doing now is basically changing the zoning from commercial to residential use with a plan that's fairly well-defined. And that's the main order of business in terms of the PD amendment. Then the other suggestions that you have are things that they would need to consider for the final development plan, because it really doesn't, it's not a big deal to turn two houses around the other way, or change this intersection versus that one, or whatever, you know, in terms of the final development plan. So, because it'd be, the idea is to be, that the two are in substantial compliance with each other, but it allows for some variations, so.
That's what I'd like to make sure, is that the resolution includes or incorporates that ability to make some changes like that, which would improve, actually, I think, as Commissioner Folsom said, your development. I really think those are good suggestions.
Yeah, you might.
Also, to understand, you know, like, we were talking about the, Commissioner Harden had said too, about the extension over into, because I'm really concerned about the 10 feet. And if you start extending into that, you know, I understand what the applicant has said, and I love the idea of transoms and things like that. So I just want to make sure that there's ability to do that without going through 15 rounds of further discussions, and also that we can't come back and say, oh, we can't change anything. No. So that's, those are my comments that I, are concern, they're not concerns, they're my comments about this. I just want to understand that. That's what we're doing. We're replating, and we're changing from commercial to residential, and we can still make changes as appropriate and as agreed to in the final development plan.
That's correct. The heart of the application tonight is a request to change the zoning, which was commercial in this PD, to residential uses, and then replating to the 39 residential lots. So those are the two primary approvals. The conditions that you're attaching to the resolution are things for the applicant to consider in moving forward in the process and bringing the application to the board, and things to consider in moving forward to the final development plan, the FDP stage, where these details would need to be finalized. But at this stage, it's the change in zoning and the replating to redraw those lot lines. And as part of that, they're bringing the plan, the preliminary plans, for what the development will look like.
Okay.
But you're not, you're not boxing yourself in to every little detail that's proposed in front of you tonight.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussions with staff or the applicant? Do you have more public comment?
I do.
Yes, feel free, come on up.
Heidi Howard, again, I'm a new resident to Superior, and so I don't have all the history. But the other resident that spoke earlier with the history, I would just like the commissioner to answer her question, because she asked the commissioner to respond in terms of the history with the other area across the street from Colton, when there was a request to, by the residents, to consider that. If you could just address her concern.
Sure. Now, during discussion, we're going to do that. We just, we don't, we don't have discussions till we close the public hearing. It's kind of this procedural thing that we have to go through in order of doing things. But yes, we are intending to discuss that. I've got that right here on my list to discuss that, and so we will be doing that. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Sure, okay. Public hearing's closed. Now we move into discussion, and we'd like to start. Commissioner Ricker?
I'll start. I like this idea. I think it's a product that Superior needs. We've been touching base with several other developments in the past, and we've considered, we're touching on the same type of subject, not really specifically addressing senior living and zero, zero access requirements. But this seems to be a pretty good mixture of some open space, utilizing the land that's been sitting there as a big eyesore for a long time. And I think it'll help the townhome development that's adjacent to the site, and it might be easier to market those properties. I think that's going to help. As far as the commercial versus residential thing goes, I just, I just don't think this location's going to work in a commercial application. That's my personal belief. It's on the fringe of something called McCaslin and Colton, and I just don't think it's centrally located in an convenient area to use it. The product looks pretty good. It looks in keeping with the townhomes that are adjacent, again, to the site. So I think it'll mix pretty well. That's my comment.
I'd like to join in that. I think, and I apologize for not recalling your name, but we've mentioned that the concept of patio homes before in relation to other parts of Superior, and I've heard, and I think it came up earlier, that the Steel Ranch sold out very quickly and was very well-received. And I do think that, you know, this is an appropriate development for some space that's been, for all practical purposes, ignored for a long time and fulfills a need at the same time. So I'm for it. Granted, there's some inherent flexibility that we've been assured about and those kinds of things, but conceptually, I'm for it.
Okay. Commissioner Duzell?
The commercial question for this development is, it was an idea that people thought of when we were, you know, 10 years ago or more young. And so everybody thought, oh, you could put commercial anywhere in Superior, it was going to be good. Well, look at Superior, the Safeway Shopping Center area. That's where we planted a little shopping area in the middle of the town, and we've had difficulty keeping that filled, except for the Safeway Shopping. So I think this one would be just equally as difficult to fill up as a commercial location. So I'm, I like the idea of turning this into the type of home that we say is missing in Superior, which is the single-story, single-detached home that people can lock and leave if they want to, like you were saying. You can't have a place, or it doesn't appear that you could have another commercial, a small little commercial site so close to the Safeway Shopping Center and down the street from what will be the Superior Town Center and have it be viable. So this is a better option than the commercial option, you know, in my mind. And I've lived here 20 years, so I've watched them come and go and ideas come and go. And I think that one of the comments that was made in the staff report, that originally, when this was proposed, we thought we were going to have a residential development across the street. You know, it was going to be a big development over there with large homes, many homes, and that didn't come to fruition. So now that even says that this area as a commercial development isn't as viable, and so this idea is a good one. It's a really nice place. I have been in the townhomes up there, and I love them. I have a friend who lives there. When it was originally proposed, I loved that concept and the idea, and so I'm glad now you're being able to sell more. Actually, I know some of the people that are buying that you just said that you've, that you've signed contracts with. So I like this idea too, and I like that it's low, so that the people still that are on the higher homes, townhomes, can see across. And I appreciate that there was the view corridor analysis done, because that's very important. Everybody wants to see the foothills and the mountains, because that's why we're here. Every morning, I get up and look at the mountains. First thing I do in the morning, I get up and look at the mountains. So I think that's a good concept. I also like the idea that was proposed about making it a community, you know, shutting off that cul-de-sac. I think that's a great idea, having that as a cul-de-sac. People do like cul-de-sacs. Hopefully, that doesn't mean that people will try to use that other road as a, as a through cut, you know, to get around the roundabout. They may figure that out when it gets busier on McCaslin, and maybe they'll think about something to keep them from doing that. But right now, it shouldn't be a problem. I do have a concern about the density. I mean, I know it's going to be denser than the, the I mean, I know it's going to be denser than the, the Chapter 16 of our municipal code says, but this is twice as dense. And again, I don't have a problem with density if you can lay them out right so it doesn't feel like I'm, I've just got a little alleyway, you know, a sidewalk, basically, which is gravel between the homes. So, that's my concern. And I'm not talking about taking out a lot of homes. I'm just, you know, looking at some of the streets and thinking, oh, maybe this one, you know, could take out one home along here and it might help considerably because I have concerns too about how people and places and water and things get down between the homes. I'd rather see them connected than having a eight or 10-foot walkway between the homes, actually. So, I would just ask that we think about the density again and not, not decreasing it by significant amount or decreasing the density, but maybe thinking about where you can make it a little bit better than it is right now. And I like the idea of the trails connecting through that little triangle there. I think mostly what people will use it for is for run-through or walk-through. I don't know that anybody will be standing there and sitting and contemplating the mountains or the stars because it's on a busy intersection. But it, it is good to have kind of a circle around. At first, I thought maybe just one connection, but the connection across over here and the connection down through Rock Creek is probably a good idea because I see a lot of people going around ponds and, you know, running around things and walking through multiple ways through areas like that. So, I think that would be a good thing to have those two connections there. So, otherwise, I, I think it's a good use of this property to have that type of home there and I like that, that you're going to build it because I've seen your work and I think it's good. And, and I see that people are starting to buy these types of homes and they're starting to buy up there in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCool.
Whenever, whenever we're building residence, new homes, there's just always concern. And I look at Superior, we are, there is an end in sight. There's, there's limited number of parcels left to develop. And so, we do look to our comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan, I mean, you know, as was stated that, that residential isn't precluded for this area. And that was done on purpose because as the land, as the Verheys parcel sold and we lost, there was 600 and some odd homes that were planned for that parcel. And so, you know, having 600 homes there and adding another 100 homes in the Calmonte area opened up the possibility of having. And then the discussion was actually at that time about small office-type space, some retail, a whole lot, maybe enough to support the 600 or 700 homes. And so, as that turned into open space, then, you know, I really think that residential just makes sense and I really like the looks of this development. It doesn't add a whole lot to that area. And we, as you said, it's, you know, it's lower, you know, there's everything about this, just, you know, developing this parcel just fits really nicely, I think, in our town. But I respect, I mean, I, you know, living in an original town, you know, we've got 59 new homes going in just up the street and it's, you know, it's not really fun for anybody, the amount of development going on. The traffic increases are always, there's always a worry about them. I, you know, when I first moved here, I could be out on a Saturday and people have heard me say this before, and I might see two cars go up Coal Creek Drive. You know, now I see, you know, well, that many, probably a minute, you know, along with half a dozen or two dozen bikes that go by at the same time. It's just, but it's not heavy traffic. It's not bothersome and so it's, you know, it's not like we're gridlocked and if you've come from the city, you know that, you know, it's pretty comfortable here driving around Superior. So, I mean, I am in favor of this and some of my comments, I guess the, the density I think is fine. I, I agree with what you're saying. These, if you widen that space between the homes, I agree, they get used. They get, they get turned into things. They have to be maintained and they have to be kept. And so, I like how you presented the idea that if they're kind of narrower, they sort of get left alone, they're just maintained and the focus becomes front and back. So, I, I don't have any issue with the density. I think that, that's good. I really liked the idea of the cul-de-sac line. I think that was a great idea, closing that off. As far as Calmonte cut through, I mean, we can address that with traffic calming. I know even looking at Coal Creek, it's, it's less of a cut through, I think, than it used to be and, and, you know, we know that's an easy way to get over to the marketplace. But when we put that streetscape in and narrowed those things down and made it just a little bit harder to go more than 25 up that street, that helps a lot. So, I would encourage us to think about making sure we have similar type traffic calming design along Calmonte and that would, I think, discourage that. It's a long cut. It's, I mean, it's going to be faster to just go through the circle and make the right. I like the looks of the trails. I think that looks great. In general, I think it's a good plan. I like the, the product, looks good too, which is great, so.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Harden.
I agree. I'm, I like the product. I think it's a good-looking product. It's probably something that's needed as I get older, I think, you know, is something other people are thinking about too. As far as this being commercial, as it was mentioned, the Verheys and the La Stoca property across the street is going to be a huge development. And now we have Brumfield with their mall and all their, you know, great big huge Walmart and all those kind of things. And with our new development, I just don't see a reason to have commercial in that little area because as Commissioner Dozel said, it's really hard to keep those businesses by Safeway. We went through how many liquor licenses for those restaurants? They just don't seem to stay. So, don't want to get something in there and then not have it be productive. So, I think the housing is probably the better way to go. So, that's my favorite.
Okay, thanks. A number of people touched on the commercial versus residential and I would only add and reiterate that I'm, I'm supportive of the transition from residential to commercial. The early versions of Rock Creek had, you know, basically a mirror image of Rock Creek on the west side of Colton and there was going to be a lot of homes. And the idea was to have that Colton-McCaslin little node be a, a regional commercial center. And Boulder County came along and put the brakes on that and said, nope, not so fast and bottled that up as open space on the west side of Colton. And so, that changed the whole plan. And so, all of a sudden, you had this, these old commercial pieces there that are no longer viable as commercial and they, they've sat there for a long time because there just hasn't been any development. And so, in listening to the Board of Trustees at the preliminary concept plan on this project, they were very supportive of the idea of changing from commercial to residential on this parcel. Now, the one to the north is, is a different parcel and that'll be a different discussion at a different time. And who knows where that, you know, where that will go. But for this particular parcel, I think it makes sense. And I, I like the product. I like the developer. I think it's, their timing's great and I'm very supportive of the project. I would, I heard from a couple of the commissioners that were in support of the, of the cul-de-sac concept for Castillon, it'd be interested in you two if you're.
Sure.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
The only concern I have is obviously we have excess and eager issues and the more you kind of bottle everything up and you're coming out one, one way.
Sure.
That changes the dynamics of the traffic patterns, helps?
It can, yeah.
Helps?
Yeah. Well, yes.
That's, that's my concern.
I think your rationale is correct though. Makes more sense to empty, empty into a cul-de-sac than a road lane.
Okay. I just wanted to give, from this process, I just wanted to give the developer a sense of, of where we all were. You know, was it, was it just me that was thinking that or was it all, you know, was everyone nodding their head? So, it sounds like.
And there's no left turn. It's a three-quarter turn out of that onto Colton, right? There's no left turn on Colton.
Correct.
So, that's going to send, I mean, it's really not changing the pattern that much because everybody's just going to kind of have to come out very, if they're going to go north, yeah, if they're going to go north on, on McCaslin, they're going to have to come back Calmonte instead of that way.
Correct. I just wasn't concerned that the traffic numbers, by, by closing that off, it just didn't seem to throw the traffic numbers significantly at all, so.
Not a lot.
Right.
It'll be.
How about the, the idea of the homes that are at the end of Calmonte at McCaslin, flipping those two? Is there a general consensus if that's a good idea or is that not a good idea?
It's a good idea because it's going to make better resale for spot offerings.
Okay.
Anytime you're that close to McCaslin.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to give them a sense of, should they go down that path or should they just not go down that path?
I sort of think it's up to them. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's certainly an idea worth putting out there and let them explore it, but I don't know that that's within our.
Yeah, it would depend on whether or not you could physically change it around, but if you could, that would be a much better, I'd buy that one before I'd buy any of those other ones, so that, on the end of the cul-de-sac like that.
Okay.
But that would be dependent on whether you could engineer it.
It really is an, it's, it is an engineering question.
So, my question is, did you want those to be conditions in the resolution or do you want those to be suggestions? Because we could have both, is that correct?
Or it's just feedback we don't put anywhere, right?
That's fine. They sound to me like they might be more along the lines of suggestions or recommendations for the applicant to explore.
Yes.
Moving forward and bring back results after they look into it as opposed to conditions of approval of, of the, the questions.
I would agree with that because these are, these are engineering questions that I don't think we want to define them as conditions, so they're more of engineering questions. The final one I had that Commissioner Dozel brought up, density concerns, and I heard Commissioner McCool say he didn't have density concerns. I don't have, I don't really share the density concerns. I just wanted to kind of get a sense of the whole board again to give, to give them some kind of direction as to where the commission, commissioners were on, on density.
I don't have.
Okay.
I don't have one. You know, it's, it's chicken or the egg is what I call this. I mean, you could have adjoining patio homes, you know, in duplex form and cut some of this out again, this discussion of voids between the houses, but it's, it's a sales point too. People always live connected to someone else's property also, so it's half a dozen on one or the other, in my opinion.
It's a sound upper, really. I mean, that's about all it adds up to probably, but, you know, with a sense of additional privacy.
It's just what the product is.
Okay.
The density for me, again, wasn't that so much the number of homes, just some, in some places, they may be, it's hard to tell, you know, because we don't, some of the pictures I saw showed, looked like there was quite a bit of space, a lot more than 10 feet between these, these sketches. So, it's kind of, it was hard to tell what 10 feet looks like. So, that's all I'm saying. And even when I made my comments, I'm, I'm not saying take out half of the homes. I'm just saying, look at, if you're going to be 10 feet and then all of a sudden you encroach another foot and now you're closer to eight feet or seven and a half feet, I don't know if that's what would be a good thing. And so, I hear and I agree with what you're saying about the wider you get sometimes and people want lots of landscaping, but on the, on the flip side of that, the narrower it is, you can't do anything in there. I mean, tree can grow in there or bush or anything, so.
Keep in mind too that, that those are setbacks. They're not, they're not necessarily what the home design's going to lay out. That's, that's what they're permitted as, minimum setbacks, right? And so, I could see from the design, there were places that looked really close. There are other places that seemed.
Some looked great.
Yeah, some looked great.
And then others were, so that's.
Giving them that ability to, I mean, yes, I would agree. If these things are going to be rock homes, 10 feet apart all the way down, that would be a different issue, but I think when we see the, the final plat, that it'll, yeah, if it turns out.
That's what I'm commenting, you know, and I know we've closed the public comment, but my concerns are that some of them look good and there are other places where it looked detight.
Some places, yeah, there were a couple places that looked tight.
Okay.
So, it's not the density as much as, as just the proximity. Because there was an article just in the Denver Post about the fire department having problems with all these closed homes and this, it was exactly the comment, that 10 feet space between the homes is too close. And I got that article that I can bring in, but it was just in the Denver Post last month that talked about that and I think it was in Louisville and in Lafayette or I'm not sure where, but in, I'm not sure which development. But I think it is something that, you know, as you Rob Phillips said, we have to think about or we should be concerned or give consideration to, I should say, about that because they said that it was just way too close and the fire departments were saying, wait a second. And I don't know about our fire department, but we should probably ask that question.
Except for the risk of just the fire spreading or their ability to access.
Their ability to get in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have a, just a comment on one of the.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the walkway lighting along the trails must be provided. LED lighting is acceptable. Are we, I mean, do we want to require that rather than just it being acceptable? I mean, it's, are we really pushing LED lighting or are we saying it's okay to do something else? Are we strongly trying, are we trying to strongly encourage that they use LED?
Yeah.
So, should we use a stronger word than acceptable? Or can we just require it or?
Yeah, just.
At least preferred, but.
Beyond preferred, I think. It's beyond preferred.
Yeah, because, because this says acceptable. It doesn't say required.
Well, there you go.
It does say required for.
Oh, E says shall be.
Street lighting. Shall be revised to LED, but number four, the walkway lighting says.
Well, walkway lighting, we would, the walkway lighting, we would use the one we have in our code and we would want a max of around one foot candle up. You know, this low-level lighting with, using a pedestrian light, we're not talking about a street light.
Right.
So, so that would be a low-level lighting system, very low level. But for the streetlights, you know, I think in the resolution, it shall be.
Right. Yeah, I was just asking about number four. Do we just, do we want to leave that as is or do we want a more stronger for the, I mean, we'd want it.
Are you looking at the staff report for number four?
Well, let's see. Yes, I'm looking at the staff's part, number four in the motion.
Well, it's item D, it's condition D.
The resolution is.
The resolution is D. Says it's acceptable on this, I'm fine, anyway, just, you know, if we're really pushing it, do we just want to use it?
I think we can work with the amount of that. We've got to get that, get that straightened out a bit more, but I think that we can maybe go either way with the, with the pedestrian lights, but I, that's something we need to sort out once or so.
I think solar is also acceptable, just due to maybe running electricals.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we're open to technical, tech, technology. In other words, we could actually go to solar lighting along the pedestrian ways. We don't have to run a wire necessarily, so each light has got its own little thing and turns them on, can be on a timer and everything. So, I think we want, once we get into the dits and grits of that in terms of the final development plan, we'll, we'll work that out and make sure that we understand from the board what kind of streetlights they want here. We've been told it's LED and then if we want the same on the trails.
So, should we just say walkway lighting along the trails must be provided, lighting type to be determined?
Be fine.
That's fine. It's essentially what it says right now.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
So, it's not too much of a, play with it anymore.
Is there any other condition language that the commissioners have any comments, questions or proposed changes on? Everybody good with the condition list as, as proposed?
Okay, was it water shed thing that Michelle, Rochelle brought up?
Yes.
Okay. Number seven, I mean, I sort of agree. I don't know that we need to focus on adding more sod. I'd be, number seven.
It's G.
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 Do we want to really focus on sod or is that really the intent or is the intent to just improve the look and feel of, just to improve? What's, what are we really going after here? Do we really want to add more grass?
I would define it with shall or further refine the landscape areas, period or something.
I think staff's intent on that was to provide continuity and appearance between the two Rock Creek developments on either side and being that there are irrigated landscapes on either side of Rock Creek. However, we're open to, you know, your, your conditions or, you know, we'd like to hear your thoughts on it, but that was what staff's intent was, was to provide a visual continuity between the areas.
I kind of agree. We have too much sod.
I do too.
All around this town and we ought to be really doing things a little differently, but.
I would agree with that too.
I'd rather see it professionally landscaped with flowering things and, you know, green things, but not necessarily sod.
Yeah, things.
So, so I, I think we should strike that sod portion, just say.
I like Commissioner Monarch's suggestion just to.
Just scratch that whole second part. Just scratch that whole second part.
Just end with...
Applicant shall further refine the landscape areas, period.
Near the areas.
Yeah.
Or...
Near the development entries.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah, because we're not responsible for theirs inside of their development.
Right. Just take out the middle sentence that's...
Yeah.
Middle phrase.
References sod.
So, the condition would read applicant shall further refine the landscaped areas near the development entries?
Yeah, correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Any other condition changes? Okay. So, then for lists of suggestions, we have two items, is it? Right? The Castillon cul-de-sac, you want to craft a sentence there and just read it back to us, just to see if it...
I don't know, you try it.
Something to the effect of applicant shall...
These are options to consider and explore for final development plan. One would be make Castillon a cul-de-sac at McCaslin. And the second one was, the, are we, are we shifting, shifting the, possibly the two homes that are on Calmonte at McCaslin to, in a different orientation? So, that they're basically not backing out so close to the intersection?
They would face onto Castillon, then?
Oh, no.
Yes.
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 It wasn't Avenue B.
No, they went on Street B, on the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, Street B.
They would, yeah, face onto the adjacent cul-de-sac.
Street B.
Street B.
So, just shift the two homes that are on Calmonte at McCaslin, consider shifting the, the orientation of the two homes at, on Calmonte Avenue at McCaslin Boulevard to the north.
Yes.
Okay.
Two or possibly three, looking at...
Two to three.
Two to three.
Okay.
Two or three.
Two or three.
I never thought of three of them in today's cul-de-sac, but, you know, if it's put them really close together.
Yeah. Phyllis also brought up the, that, on the side setbacks, the...
Cannoliers?
Yeah, the cannoli, and do we, I mean, I know what their intent is, but do we feel like we need to formal, have them figure out a way to formalize that so that, you know, we can't end up with, you know, two 30-inch...
We've got, we've got items...
Cannoliers coming over, I mean, they won't, but I mean...
We've got item C, which is patio stacks and any covers, should we include...
Or shall be within, well, but they had some areas that, I don't know, it sounded like they had one, but, I mean, I guess we could either say, figure it out, or we trust that they're going to do the right thing, but...
From what I heard, I didn't think it...
I'm not terribly worried, but I didn't want to let it slide. Are you okay?
Okay.
How it is, okay.
Okay.
And what about the, the street calming? I haven't driven down Comonte, to be honest, so I don't know what it, whether it's just a wide-open shot through there right now, is it, is it, do we want to, is it, is it just a wide-open shot?
I've rarely seen traffic on it, and I'm...
Well, no, yeah.
...on it, I've rarely seen it.
True, yeah.
Because there's nothing there yet, though, but so...
Yeah, people don't really realize it's there.
They don't realize it.
I don't know that we need to do anything.
They don't know it's a shirt.
I guess we can do that later, we can do that later, too, if it became a problem. Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
Fast to stay up there.
See, yeah, yeah.
Can I speak?
Sure.
We have a raised, we have a raised crosswalk to provide a traffic calming feature on Comonte right in the center, just past Castillon, just to the west of Castillon.
Okay, cool. All right, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, anything, anything else? I think we're close. Okay.
Two suggestions?
Two suggestions.
Do we need to read those into the record, or are we good?
Let's, let's do, I'd like them, I'd like to make sure they're included.
Mr. McCool? Before we vote, so we, we met with the board, meant to bring this up earlier, but we kind of met with the board about, you know, making sure that they don't repeat this entire meeting at the board level. So, just in the spirit of the fact that we just sat down and had a dinner with them, and here we have a plan in front of us that they could very well go through and spend an hour and a half going through what we just did. Some of the ideas were, one, that the, that the video would get entered into the public record so that they could view it before any...
I don't know if we've got an answer on that yet, though.
We haven't gotten an answer, okay.
I don't, I don't know that we have an answer on that.
I don't know the answer to that, I'm not sure if that's been determined.
Okay. So, I guess if it has been and we can, I would like to vocalize that and bring it up. And I don't know if there's anything else we can do to improve that process when it gets to the town board, so, I mean, because frankly, if they could spend more time entertaining public comment about what's going on and less about the details that we've worked through, that would be a, a good thing.
We, we did say that we were going to get the minutes to them before, so how do we go about getting our minutes...
Approved.
Approved, so that we can present them along with...
Well, they can, they can review draft minutes.
Well, and you will have, I'll cover this in the staff report, but, or the staff, I guess, comments for next time, but we are anticipating a planning commission meeting that will be held on April 15th, prior to the town board hearing of this on April 28th. So, there will be an opportunity to approve the minutes formally for this particular application. And next time around, I guess we can figure out if we need to do draft minutes or whatever.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And wasn't the other thing we said, we were going to do kind of a little summary document or something, too?
I think we were going to explain why we did something or the other, so that they would understand where we were coming from, or we would pass a comment on...
We discussed those ideas, but I think that's adding a lot of layers that, that...
No, I'm not breaking it up because it came up.
It did, it did.
And how we wanted to feel that it was...
I think if we get the meeting minutes done, and, and hopefully, if they can view the video of the meeting, that, to me, is about as good as, as good as you can get.
I think that's good.
Well, yeah, I would, I would say if the video can't get approved, I'm going to have some other things to say, so, and I would say it won't be acceptable if they can't. If we can't get the video into public record that they, they can view it, then I think we need to come back and have some discussion about how to make the process easier.
I agree.
Because I think it's insane that they, that they can't, but, but if for some reason, there's some legal reason they can't, then I think we need to come back and figure out a way to get the information to them so that they don't have to go through this process again, so just put that up there.
Okay. You want to review the list of conditions as, as changed, and, and our two lists of, or two items of suggested, suggestions?
Do you want to read your own here, or are you going to...
No, I'll read it. What's objection is there? So, what I have is make Castillon Avenue...
Sorry, Ted.
Go ahead.
These are the planning commission's suggested, suggestions and recommendations and requests the applicant explore areas of the project further, as follows.
Number one, make Castillon Avenue a cul-de-sac at McCaslin Boulevard. And number two is shift two or three homes that are on Calmonte Avenue at the intersection of McCaslin Boulevard to the north. Consider that, okay?
Okay.
Those are the two that I have.
Okay. And then we had a few revisions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
We had a few revisions to the conditions, so if you want to go through those.
Okay. You have the revisions to the, the only one that I saw was number G.
Okay, there's G.
Could we read all of them in their entirety for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Number, or letter A, applicant shall make minor technical and red line corrections to plans as identified by staff. B, conceptual trail alignment through track K shall be finalized by town staff and the applicant prior to final development plan approval. C, all patios decks and any cover shall be within the billing setbacks. D, walkway lighting along the trails shall be provided, LED lighting is acceptable. E, street lighting shall be LED. That was E. This F, if any trail or sidewalk connections are to be maintained by the town, trail easements within a minimum width of eight feet shall be required. All maintenance responsibilities shall be defined prior to the final development plan approval. G, applicant shall further refine the landscape areas near the development entries. Those are the conditions for the PD Plan Amendment.
I thought on D, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought on D, instead of saying acceptable, was going to be, to be determined.
Okay.
Is that, or, tell me if I'm wrong.
Liz had said that was saying the same thing, but I, I can't agree with Phil.
It's entirely up to you what you want the language to be. It's entirely up to you what you would like the language to say, whether you would like it to say LED lighting is acceptable as it's written now, or to be determined.
Well, I think it's, it's more that we want, we, we want options to be explored by staff, which were, I mean, were solar sort of under the breath, and LED, and so, I mean, I guess to be...
Well, you could say LED lighting is acceptable with the final determination to be further explored by staff and the applicant.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay, you want to go through the three conditions for the preliminary plat?
Yes.
I think, I think those are changed.
No, they have not changed.
Okay.
Um, condition A for the preliminary plat is, A is applicant shall make minor technical and red line corrections to plans as identified by staff. B, the conceptual trail alignment through track K shall be finalized by town staff and applicant prior to final plat approval. C, if any trail or setback connections are to be maintained by the town, trail easements within a minimum width of eight feet shall be required. All maintenance responsibilities shall be defined prior to final plat approval.
You said setbacks, do you mean sidewalks?
I say trail or sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want me to read C again?
Is that good enough?
That's good.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, we have a list of two suggestions, we have lists of conditions, we have commissioners that would like to make a motion to approve our resolution.
Sure.
Commissioner McCool?
Make a motion to, the resolution of the planning commission of the Town Superior recommending approval of an amendment to the plan development slash zone district plan for Calmonte in case number ZON-PD-ZDP-A-2014-2, and recommending approval of the preliminary plat for Calmonte in case number SUB-PP-2014-2, with conditions as previously read into the record.
Should we vote on these together or separate?
I would, you could vote on them together.
Single res, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Ricker. All those in favor? Passage unanimous? Thank you. Anything further on that?
Yeah, just an update for the upcoming planning commission hearing that's scheduled for April 15th. We do intend to hold this planning commission hearing, we've noticed some cases. What we'll be presented with is annexation, to review and comment on a proposed annexation for the Weinstein property. The town board will be the one that approves it, so yours is, you're not recommending approval, just a comment. In addition, a plan development amendment for Discovery Office Park, and a plan development amendment for Superior Town Center, and a preliminary plat that covers both of those developments. Essentially, the, the heart of the application is a Discovery Parkway connection between those two developments, which requires plan development amendments. We'll be getting the packet up to you later next week, the week, or, the week before the planning commission hearing, but April 15th at 7:00 PM, we will have a meeting that night.
Can you refresh me on, we had, we had a Weinstein A and a Weinstein B for a while, trying to remember which, which Weinstein are we, what are we...
Yeah, oh, the Weinstein, I'd call it Weinstein A, which is the one that's right next to Discovery Parkway, or Discovery Office Park.
Okay.
It used to be the pond.
Got it, okay.